In Huxley, my project does. If, for example, he went to Ames and said, we're going to double the apartments in Ames, like everyone would laugh at that. You guys would think that is the craziest thing I've ever heard. And then say, on top of that, we're going to add another hundred. We're going to add another 50%. It's just unthinkable. Timing is very important in real estate, if not the very most important thing. And so the timing of these apartments, my apartments with another 50% added on top of that is extremely problematic. My current project brings tremendous value to our community. I believe that value is why you support it. It's not a TIF project. Mine is not. And once completed, produce roughly 540,000 in property taxes only for the city. Furthermore, the project as a whole brings more commercial businesses to town and will add support to the already existing commercial economy in Huxley. I have a minimum of three brand new commercial strip malls planned for the first, with the first one nearing completion and the second one going through city civil design preparation to submit P and Z soon. As I stated earlier, our project adds value to this community that my team and I call home. The success of these projects is directly threatened by competing project in an R3 with an R3 zoning. I do believe the council was acting, was operating with the best intentions when he chose to support Abby on the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax application. But when she said, or the Ames Alliance came to asking for support with that tax credit, I wish your response could have been something like, we appreciate your request. However, given this very early stages of your proposed project, in fact, we have already given our support to a project, which is well underway, we have chosen to support only one project this year. We can revisit your project next year for consideration. We fully support Chris as this project is the single largest investment in our town's history and produced the largest amount of property tax revenue ever. It's not the, and it's not a TIF project as apartments fall in the residential, not the commercial. And we can simp, we simply cannot risk that level of investment in our town. And also it's a very key hallmark part of the Anthem development, which is vital to our town's growth. That's what I loved you have said, um, as opposed, I know there's accurate words, but it felt more like, yes, why not? More the merrier. Let's, let's support every application we can. And that, lo and behold, the new project barely in infancy stage because this was April and May. I mean, it still doesn't even own the ground. April, May, very infancy project. That time, of course, was awarded the tax credits and I was not. And all for a project that has maybe doesn't even happen. And for someone who has zero ties to this community. It's been very clear that these tax credits cannot be transferred and they will go, and they will go back to the state if this project is denied. So as, as before, as stated, Debbie Durham with Iowa Finance Authority said simply, these two project, I cannot support two projects from the same small community and cannot be both. I cannot award both two million, two separate $1 million projects in town the size of Huxley. With this initiative they had this year, they were focused on infill and rehab projects. So Abby's project has scored better than mine. So. My objection to this rezoning in the proposed project is not, uh, not a play for me to get those funds. That ship has sailed. Has been made very clear that I can't like go get Abby's tax credits. So I'm not trying to say that. That's done deal. Um, I've been called petty for being upset about this and that these are, but these are real dollars. And these are affecting real lives here in Huxley. And it's as personal as it gets. This is my livelihood, my career, my family, my kids, my hometown. Been here for 24 years now. Now should, I should, and I very much will continue to think and act with abundance rather than scarcity if this project is approved. However, as proposed, this project will literally, has already literally cost me a million dollars. And having to compete for the same renters to fill the apartments can and will be problematic for everyone involved. I have nothing against Abby personally. From our conversations I've gathered, she's a smart, strong business person. From a strictly business point of view, I like her business plan and I would want to emulate it too with a senior focus. That's what I'm doing. This is kind of a very similar project with my senior project in Anthem. And so I want to make that clear. I recognize you guys are in a tough position as city council. I asked myself many times, what, what, what I do if I was on the city council. In my opinion, the consideration for the community and the thoughts of the proposed project, the land to the north should be zoned no more than R2, a duplex level to match the existing units in North Park. The old Madrid home, I think probably matches what, versus what, what Abby already has planned there. So I think that's probably right. I ask this council folks on what is best for the community as a whole. This includes the residents, current developers, as business owners who have already rested, already invested their life's work into the city and are proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah. Aaron Trowbridge, 505 West Centennial Drive. Um, for, I'll be up here twice tonight, but for this one, um, echoing what, uh, the fellow residents have said, I think it's just too dense of a project in that open lot. R3 seems to fit for the Madrid home piece, but the actual open lot should be R2 to flow with the rest of the, um, community there. And obviously traffic is going to be a nightmare with R2 and R3. So the lesser of the two would be beneficial. Thanks.
Alan Shapool, 1100 Northwood Circle. Not typically active in these things, but I hope you guys truly are listening to what the people are telling you. They feel that this is not the right project in the right place. I think it's a good project. I never thought about Chris's deal, but we know how things can change, whether it's economically or, or COVID. And all of a sudden, things are harder than they seem. So don't probably put that onto him too then. Let, let that project, let's shepherd one project through town and be sure that it is successful. I'm not a brainiac like, uh, or moneyed person like Debbie Durham making decisions, multimillion dollar decisions. And I understand you're squeezed in between a hard place, between the money and the people that are in our neighborhood there anyway. But I think it's really easy to see that a multi-family deal like this does not fit with what is in there in that community, in that area anyway. People have come to you with questions on drainage. You know, Abby said that, that it was only going to be half of it covered. But yeah, that may be, her picture doesn't look like that. It looks like between the, uh, parking and the buildings, most everything is going to be covered. The lady who spoke last meeting, who was worried about flooding in her basement, probably has a legitimate concern when water is already backed up for two days. Property values, as I said, then she said they went up, but they didn't keep up with the rate of inflation and the typical, the property values that we've seen going up. You know, school growth is another concern. Uh, you know, I think there's a better use. I think that the right use for that is what we have in that neighborhood. And, uh, I know I can't ask questions. The little corner that was left commercial, I didn't understand that, you know, in the picture too. That seems odd. I don't know what could end up there. So, uh, my suggestion is listen to the people that are up here. You didn't have one person accept the moneyed interest the last time that said, let's go ahead with this project. And that is something to consider if you want to listen to, listen and be open to us. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Sarah Drzimski, 120 Cedar Lane in Huxley. Um, some of the people have already talked about a few of the things that I'm going to touch base on, but, um, agreed kind of with the traffic study, um, the volume of people that are coming and going. I see that being a hard number with 64, I believe, sorry. Um, units that will be there having only 20 people, you know, leaving and coming into the property. Um, like someone spoke about earlier, just having like one car per unit. And then that's really a third of your units. A lot of two and three bedrooms are going to have two, three, four vehicles in it and even that many tenants. So some may only have one, but you will have some that will have more than that and more people that can drive. And we'll have more people going in and out. Um, again, our rental market being increased by that much at one time, two and a half times in just a few year time span is going to inundate our market with rentals in Huxley right now. Um, I would agree too that, you know, if there's a way that they could do the rezoning where like the, um, current Madrid home could be an R3 that fits that and having an R2 where there could be duplexes in town homes that do match what is across the street from it right now. Um, I also think that that would also fit more of what the rental market in Huxley needs. Um, there aren't many townhouse rentals in Huxley. There are more apartments. And so when people do go look for townhouses, there's just not many to be found for people or even single family home rentals. Um, I'm not saying put single family home rentals there, but I think that a townhouse market or duplex market would fit a lot better there versus a 13plex, um, type unit. Um, and then one other thing too, is I know that a lot of people are saying that this has been on the market for 20 years, trying to develop. But really the Madrid home just started trying to sell it only a couple of years ago. So they did have it for a long time and never really put it for sale for commercial use. Um, and so, um, just some of those points are things that I hope you guys can keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Torgerson. I live at 1014 North Park Boulevard. I've been kind of in on this since we had the first informational meeting about this. So my townhome was built in 2007 there and I moved in in 2008. Um, I'm a physician, so I went through a lot of school, lived in a lot of apartments. And this is the first place I would really call home. We have a great, uh, neighborhood. We all help each other. One of our townhome owners keeps that property looking nice by mowing it with no, no financial gain of his own. I've had concerns since the beginning that aesthetically it does not fit in the neighborhood. It just doesn't. If you take a step back and look at the drawing Abby has showed us, I walk away each time thinking it looks like a Motel 6. It's just units with parking spots in front of it. I agree that the twin homes would be a better idea there if we're going to rezone it at all. I still have concerns about safety. The initial drawings we were showed, showed the tenants emptying onto North Park Boulevard, which is our street. Meanwhile, we're backing out of our townhomes. We've got 60 to 120 cars pulling out of their driveway. And then there's still that park drive right there that no one has answered me. How are we going to protect our children in going in and out of that park there? If you live in Huxley, you know that that park is busy from April until the snow flies basically. If it's not soccer, it's softball, it's baseball, it's kids going to the park. It's just active all the time. And I've yet to hear, how are we going to protect that entrance from the kids and the cars and the parents going in and out of that park? Um, and then Abby mentioned a couple of times when we had our first meeting that there would be somebody on the property 24/7. The second conversation we had on the Zoom call was, well, there'll maybe be somebody on property. So that answer hasn't been, that question has not been answered either. So, um, I agree with all the comments you've heard. I am glad that you're getting a mix of people with various, you know, ideas and points of view where they're coming from. But at the end of the day, it doesn't look good. It doesn't fit the community. It is not safe. I have not felt in my heart, this is safe from the beginning. And I think we need to take a real serious look at moving this forward.
Okay. Thank you. For your comments.
Hi. Jean Longnecker. I live on 55868 Oak Bend Road. I have nothing, I am not, I'm commenting about the, um, annexation.
And you're welcome to, there's actually a public hearing on that next in the agenda. Um, so you're certainly welcome to talk now, but it's a little more appropriate to talk later. So. Please.
All right. Good evening. Hi, Abby Gilroy with the Mark North Park Development. I am the developer for the project and, um, I will try to fully not fumble through this too much. There was a lot that came up this evening, but a lot of it we have heard before. So I want to make sure I address those concerns in this process. Um, I feel we've presented, you know, a thoughtful and considerate plan with this project and keeping it the scale that we have. Um, pulling buildings as close to Highway 69 as possible. Um, I know there were some comments in regards to the site plan itself that hasn't been fully determined yet. Essentially what I was trying to show, and maybe I shouldn't have, was how those buildings will lay out in an east-west type direction so that the scale isn't so much, uh, living across the street and looking across the street. You're going to see a kind of a double home type scale versus this mass of 13 or seven straight units in a row. So I want people to know that that was just kind of a concept plan that was shown. That is not at all our site plan. That showed 40 parking stalls per 13 units. We're clearly not going to do that. So there will be enough parking on site, but there will be a lot of green space as well. Almost three acres of green space will remain on this site once we are done with that site plan. We haven't gotten to that stage because we need to get through the rezoning first. So that is why we're here. Once this rezoning is determined, we're going to work with the community and everyone else. We have been transparent, um, through this process so far, and we want to continue those conversations. And we're going to do that. You have my commitment that we're going to keep working with the neighbors because we are neighbors. And so, uh, we will continue to address site plan issues as far as traffic, density, parking. Um, you know, our density right now, I'm happy, I think the R2 density is something like a medium density, which is four to eight units per acre, which is right where we're at. So I'm happy to, I love the idea of an R3 for the, for the existing building. It's going to have to be that. That's already an existing condition. But as far as the new construction, if we need to put some condition of density on this, um, rezoning request, I'm happy to have that conversation and negotiate that tonight. If it has to be, hey, it's R3, but it's a density of eight units per acre, that's fine. Or if that's what R2 is, then let's talk about that. So do know I'm open to that. I thought that was great feedback. That's why we have these public hearings, so people can come out with those ideas and, and we can consider them. So, um, that would be something that I'm willing to have, um, you know, to, to work through tonight. Um, as far as, um, the traffic, I, I said the same thing. I'm going to be honest with you. I read that and I, I even called the engineer and I said, please explain how you got to these peak numbers. The, that is data that they have used for years and years and years. Multi-family data is the most thorough data that they have. And I don't want to put Councilmember Mulder on the spot, but you have some experience in this. And those, those peak numbers are figured through the equation that was provided. Um, it's a reputable firm. That's a reputable source. Um, and so I did confirm those things and it, I understand that it's hard to believe that, but that is the, the data that was kicked out. So, and that's what I wanted to provide. Um, as far as, um, what else do we have? Um, working hours, yes, I, I may have said 24/7. If I did, I misspoke. I was stating that we will have someone on site, certainly during working hours. Sometimes as property manager, management that goes into the evening. But, um, unless somebody's living with us and managing the property, I don't think we'll have anybody there in the overnight hour. So I apologize if I did say that. Um, I do think we've, like I said, um, addressed a lot of these concerns head on. We asked for them by having the community meeting. Um, we came last week and, and had some good responses and, um, or at least thoughtful responses to what people were concerned about. We're doing our very best with this. I think at the end of the day, this is eight acres of commercial ground that's, that's sitting there. That's going to be developed into something eventually. And I thought that this was probably, um, the least impactful project that could go there as far as density, traffic, lighting, trash, all those things that can come with commercial and convenience stores. And so, um, we felt like it was a good, a good fit for, um, for that site, especially with the adjacent multifamily that we're proposing with the building. Um, we have, um, just want to make sure I get everything addressed because a lot of things came up tonight. Um, I think that's a lot. There was a concern about us, um, that was, I meant to address last week about us just filling it. If we don't fill it, um, just filling it with, you know, lowering our standards for our tenant types and, um, incomes and things like that. And, you know, over in Perry, we lost Tyson last summer and lost a lot of our tenants. We are still sitting with 20 vacant units there out of our 60. And we have never, ever jeopardized our standards in applications for background checks and credit checks, those sorts of things. And so that would be the same practice here. We have no intention of doing that. Um, so I want to ease concerns about that as well, that we would just fill it to fill it. So, um, I, I feel like we, we designed a, a good scale of a project. It's one single story product that aligns with what's across the street. It's eight acre or eight units per acre, which is a medium density, which is what is right across the street. Um, so yeah, a higher density project would, would have higher returns, but that's not what I'm after here. It's just getting the lot developed and, um, leaving something considerate and tasteful in its place. Um, I think that's all I have. I'm sure there's more and I apologize if I didn't get to anybody, but the detention will be sized correctly. All those things are going to get worked out in the site, in the site plan process.
Thank you for your comments. Sir, anybody else wishing to be heard this evening, I mean, the agenda or non-agenda items other than the annexation or the urban revitalization area? Okay. Seeing no one rise, I will, we will move on. Um, the rezoning request will be discussed by council in item 6.3 later this evening. Moving along, item 4.1, the time is 6:30. I will open the public hearing on the annexation of a property owned by SMD Huxley Holdings LLC. Is there anybody wishing to be heard on this this evening? Please ma'am. I apologize. It just makes more sense to Abby talking now.
Um, first of all, can you, do you have a map that you can show of this annexation? So people know.
Could I get you to state your name and address again, please?
My name's Jean Longnecker. I live at 55868 Oak Bend Road, Huxley. So, um, I know some of the people here from the comments are concerned about overdeveloping. I think you're, I think, I think you're biting off a lot, adding this to what you already have going in Huxley. I'm obviously not a, um, citizen of Huxley proper. Um, although my address is Huxley, I think I'm right north of that, um, map. That's my address. Um, so I'm going to talk about that. I'm concerned about, first of all, overall, and just my philosophy on things. I hate to continue to see farmland taken away in the state of Iowa. I was born and raised here in Northwest Iowa. My family, farmers, um, that's my first thing. And as you go between here and Ankeny, which I just did today, that's all they're doing is gobbling up more and more farmland to, for housing. Um, and then I often wonder what's happening to all the houses that are already built. But anyway, I don't personally want it out my, my window. Um, and then, um, are you also annexing across the road, across the, where Terry? It's just my, that property north of, uh, First Street and border 560th. Okay. So I just, I'm, I object to it. I, I think first, and another thing, Huxley is expanding so fast. I don't know how your police, fire, which is a volunteer fire department, if I understand right, all that can keep up with how big Huxley is developing as fast as you are developing with all the, the houses and stuff like that. But, um, I'm not a, I mean, I, I didn't do any more research other than I don't want it out my back door.
Fair enough ma'am. Thank you for your comments.
Erin Trowbridge, 505 West Centennial Drive. Um, before the city moves forward with annexation and the revitalization district updates, uh, we need a concrete agreement on who is, uh, the infrastructure updates and who's paying for them. Um, I'm not in favor of residential TIF right now, especially for a developer this size. Um, the improvements are being made specifically for this development. Um, therefore they, they should be responsible for almost the entirety of the cost of the roundabout, which I think we need is necessary in this position. Um, if we do agree on any agreements, it should be to cover a portion of their investment, absolutely not all of it. Uh, but we shouldn't be taking on this land into the city without actually having that sorted out. Um, additionally, I'm glad we have the map up to the west. I think there's some fields that aren't part of Huxley and around, I'm just.
Oh, to the west.
Yeah, these two, east, yeah, yeah. Um, just, I'm curious about like potentially creating islands or, or zoning islands if we're getting close to that where we'd have to then have to deal with that. You know, I'm sure it's all figured out, but I'm also just curious on that part. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Anybody? Oh, please.
Al Kaufman, 1216 East First Street, Huxley, Iowa. I live to the south of that, southeast of that. My biggest concern here is SB, whatever that is. Thank you, um, is looking to, um, bring in DJ Horton, DR Horton, which is the worst builder in the United States right now. You can go to Huxley, or excuse me, Poke City, Ankeny, and there are several lawsuits. I know the lawyer right now that's in a lawsuit with them who take corner, cut, cut corners, frost in the inside of their house 12 inches down because they cut corners. Um, I've been told this wasn't a done deal. I've been told that. I'm getting a lot of conflicting information. There's already been a subcontract meeting last week. Um, I was told by a contractor that this meeting took place. Don't know if I wasn't there. I can't say. But Huxley is a great place. Proud to be from here. Appreciate all your time volunteering to help us get through all this. But why would you ever consider bringing in the lowest of the low contractors? Because we need affordable housing? What does that mean? You're going to set young people up who need, who would like to start a home with the worst people and set them up to fail with just nasty homes? I don't know that I can stop the zoning. I don't know about any of that. My concern is the kinds of builders that you would consider or the, the holding company would consider to bring in. Stop that. We don't need those kind of homes here. Poke City kicked them out. Now they're over in, in, um, Omaha. They're having problems over in Omaha as well. Ankeny, I mentioned that. Those are close, pretty close to us. Don't ever consider that. Please listen to what we're saying. Do your own research. So thanks for your time, guys, and.
Do appreciate your comments, ma'am.
Terry Kaufman, 1216 East First. I have just a bunch of questions and I don't know if there's going to be a question answer session.
It's fair, fair question. Um, so this is a, I'll, I'll call it a one-way conversation. It's your opportunity to give council your thoughts and concerns, uh, on the annexation. Uh, but it's not an opportunity for a question and answer at this time. So.
Not later on tonight either.
You're correct. You're correct. Yes, sir.
So I've heard different numbers of houses that would, would go into this, what, 54 acres? Correct? Forty-seven, okay. Is there going to be any apartment buildings? You know, the big suitcases like there are in the northeast corner of Ankeny, along the interstate. Okay. So I, should I go on with my questions then or?
And, and just to be clear, um, you can certainly ask questions if you want. But again, it's not an opportunity for, for council to answer your questions. Um, you know, we'll certainly listen to them and council members are noting those. Um, but yeah, it's an opportunity for you to ask your questions, voice your concerns, uh, et cetera. Uh, but it's not an opportunity for us to answer those.
Okay. So I guess I'm going to throw this out to you guys and you can nod your head or think about it or whatever. But has anybody, any of you ever inspected or, or been around the DR Horton building sites? Okay. I'll hold the rest. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Sir, anybody else wishing to be heard on the SMBD Huxley Holdings annexation? Okay. Um, just to kind of give you an update, uh, this is the public hearing this evening on that annexation. Uh, it will be a discussion item at the first meeting in December, David, or? Oh, I'm sorry. It's one, uh, 2.1. Okay. I'm sorry, one point one, okay, thank you very much. All right, seeing no one else rise to be heard, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Give you a motion.
Motion by Mr. Mulder.
Give you a second.
Second by Ms. Roberts. You want a roll call, Barb? Please.
Mulder. Murphy.
Yes.
Roberts, yes. Etcher.
Yes.
Rigler.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for confusing the issue here, need a motion to approve resolution two five one oh seven, say, resolution annexing certain property owned by S M B D Huxley Holdings into the city of Huxley. And motion.
I'll give you a motion.
Motion by Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mulder. Now is the opportunity for council discussion on this.
So I guess the answer for, as far as we know, there is no apartments going up there as far as we know at this time. Tonight is just for the rezoning.
Yeah, it's just for the.
And, and I'm sorry, the annexation of that, that land. So, as far as, we're going to say that DR Horton's going in there or not, there, they've got interest, they've showed the interest, uh, they've showed us plans, um, but we're not saying that that's going to happen. So, we're just doing the annexation tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate you clarifying that, clarifying that, Mr. Etcher, uh, tonight is the annexation, the next step in the process, um, would be a rezone, is this coming in as our?
Uh, it's being developed as a P U D, so you'll have a master plan that'll have to come forward.
Okay.
Uh, through planning and zoning, I'm into council.
Right, thank you.
Just one piece, an additional piece I wanted to clarify, and, um, I'd gotten some text from people, uh, just wanting to understand what, what stage that meant, I think we've touched on it, uh, site plan hasn't been approved, um, you alluded to that, so there shouldn't be any confusion about, is this a done deal? What this would be doing is bringing this land into city limits. Uh, Aaron, I heard your piece, I know I've actually talked with you on the side about it, I think this squares up our city limits along five sixtieth, there are a couple of islands in between, um, but going down to two ten with the annexation of, it was Clark and Brindalins, uh, going down to two ten, um, that's, that's part of my interest, um, I definitely hear the concerns about potential developer, that's not lost, um, but I did want to clarify, this is just bringing that land into the city limits, it's not voting on a site plan or development or anything like that, um, at least speaking for myself, you can ask the other people what they think, this is squaring up our city limit lines, and I do believe eventually this is going to become residential development, it doesn't tie us to a certain builder, so.
Any other comments from council or questions? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Roberts, yes. Murphy.
Yes.
Etcher.
Yes.
Rigler.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Good, moving along this evening, item two, uh, is a public hearing, the time is six forty-three, I will open the public hearing on, uh, the proposed two thousand and twenty-five amendment to the Huxley urban revitalization area. Dave, can you give us an overview of it, as to what this is covering?
Yes, I'd be happy to, um, as we talked previously, I think it's about a month ago, the city has had an urban revive area that offered abatement since the early two thousands, um, it has not been used, um, much probably in the last ten or fifteen years for abatement. Uh, we have a gentleman, um, who's purchased a lot out in, uh, Blue Sky Commons, uh, he has owned a business in, in Ames for about twenty years, but he's in lease space, and that lease space is actually on the Boone County side of Ames. As he was looking to put together his building plans to move his business here, to expand his business, um, it's a small company, they currently have about seventeen employees, um, he's looking to build about a seventeen thousand square foot facility, uh, hopefully adding some more folks, um, for him, you know, he's like, you know, we talked about abatement, we talked about TIF, TIF is something that he has to pay the taxes and it gets rebated back later in the year, where the abatement is something that keeps money in his pocket as a small business owner, and that was kind of the impetus for bringing this back. In working with Amy Bjork from Dorsey and Whitney, uh, this would offer, um, abatement to commercial and industrial properties, um, in the city, uh, as, as long as they haven't received TIF, uh, you can't take TIF and abatement, it's, it's kind of one or the other, um, and I think in his instance, this particular, um, amendment, there are three different, um, schedules, there's a three-year schedule, there's a five-year schedule, and there's a ten-year schedule, and it's really up to the business that's choosing to use that if council approves it, which schedule that they take, so. Be happy to answer any other questions if you need any other information on that.
Any other questions from council on this?
Yes, so this just allows us, we're not agreeing to anything, this just allows the option.
This just gives the city another tool for development that the city can offer.
Thanks.
Any additional discussion?
And just, just the public, public has me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've skipped over this, didn't I? It is a, a public hearing, so is there anybody from the public wishing to be heard on this item this evening? Okay, seeing no one rise, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll offer a motion.
Motion by Mr. Rigler.
A second.
Second by Ms. Roberts. Roll call, please.
Rigler?
Yes.
Roberts? Yes. Mulder?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion to approve, uh, item two point one, need a motion to approve resolution number two five one oh eight, it's a resolution adopting, amending, and restating the urban revitalization plan for the Huxley urban revitalization area.
Give you a motion.
Motion, Mr. Mulder.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Rigler. Now, any discussion from council on this?
Just restating, it's just a tool in our toolbox, correct?
Yeah, I appreciate having another tool in our toolbox, we hear a lot about TIF, and this gives us another option, um, rather than go in that direction, so.
Okay, hearing no further comments. I have a motion in a second, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Moving along, need a motion to approve, uh, item two point two this evening, which is an ordinance, uh, ordinance number five five four, it's an ordinance amending, ordinance is, does, amending ordinances designated, designating an area of Huxley, Iowa, as the Huxley urban revitalization area.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Etcher.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Mulder. Any council questions or discussion on this? This is the first reading. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second reading of this ordinance.
We'll give you that motion.
Motion, Mr. Mulder.
Give you the second.
Second, Ms. Roberts, this would take a four fifths vote by council, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number five five four.
Make the motion.
Motion, Ms. Roberts. Second, Mr. Mulder.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
That was the second reading, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and waive the third reading as well, this would take a four fifths vote.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Etcher.
Second.
Second, Mr. Mulder. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
I would ask for a motion for the third reading of ordinance number five five four.
I'll give you one.
Motion, Mulder. Second, Etcher, discussion, roll call, please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Moving along this evening, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, before I do that, is there any items that any council members wish, wished to have polled for further discussion? Seeing none, ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll offer a motion.
Motion by Mr. Rigler.
Give you the second.
Second by Ms. Roberts, any discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just noticed the water purchase, is that include hail trailer too, or is that only come and go?
Just mess, come and go.
Yeah, okay, so hail trailer is not on that current.
Correct.
Yep, thanks.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Moving along, item six point one this evening, uh, I need a motion to approve resolution number two five one one five, it's a resolution imposing a moratorium on the issuance of building permits for, for shipping containers within the city of Huxley.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Etcher.
You're the second for discussion.
Second by Ms. Roberts for discussion here. Dave, can you give us an overview, please?
Certainly will, um, we discussed this a little bit last year, um, at P and Z, it hadn't probably gotten too far, we're starting, um, to see, um, shipping containers being used as, um, sheds in residential areas, uh, there are uses, I think, in commercial, industrial, I've researched some current towns, I did visit with our sys, our city attorney, uh, who stated a couple of the communities that she also represents, they have a, um, they're, they're not allowing those, uh, what the more, what the moratorium does is it gives us ninety days to talk through P and Z and then to talk with council to see if this is something that you're interested in pursuing, um, if you're not, uh, we'll move forward and, uh, just work with them as part of the code as a viable option for a shed in a residential area. And I'm mainly looking at, at the residential side, not so much the commercial or the industrial, but that is an option that could be taken up by P and Z or by council if it's, you know, their prerogative.
So if we bring this up, have the discussion, we can still choose to do nothing? Okay.
But if you approve the moratorium, it's just for a ninety day period, and if you do nothing at the end of ninety days, then.
Are there any outstanding requests right now?
Uh, we just approved one, um, last week, or within the last two weeks, uh, for one that'll be in a residential area here in the community.
Which will be unaffected by this moratorium.
It is unaffected, they've already received their permit, all this does is, we don't allow anymore until you have an opportunity to decide if that's something, uh, that is a city that we want to see used as a shed in our community or residential area. And I'm not saying that, I mean, I, like Greg and I had a conversation today, you know, shipping containers, I've seen some pretty cool homes designed, but the question comes down to, is that a use that you want them as a storage shed in your residential areas, it's just for discussion?
Yeah, yeah, so that was my question too, this doesn't limit anything, if somebody had a proposed home or residential situation that they wanted to use, um, it's just storage only.
Correct, so that would be impacted by the accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Ordinance that you just recently passed, and so that, if they're using it as a dwelling unit, it's a different conversation than if they're using it for just storage.
I've been in some pretty cool storage homes, uh, out there, sort of, so. I think this will give us the opportunity to look at it, see what other communities are doing, and see what, if, if we want to put any parameters on this, because I do think of, if you just put a, a metal storage unit in a, basically a residential area, it's going to be an eyesore for some people.
Dave, uh, i- if we do approve this moratorium, would you, uh, intend to have P and Z look at this, is that your intent?
Yes, we would, uh, take this to P and Z, probably at their December meeting, uh, January at the latest, they may want to have discussion over two meetings, but, uh, we've I've probably got about a half a dozen cities, uh, that have provided stuff, I've got a couple more that I'm waiting for, that we would include as just a discussion and talking point, and then, uh, just see what P and Z's, you know, thoughts are on them, and have them make a recommendation for your consideration as you look at it as well.
Good, thank you. Any additional questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, I've got a motion in a second, roll call, please.
Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Okay, item six point two this evening, I'll need a motion to approve resolution number two five one one six, that's, uh, regarding streetlights for the Anthem development, need a motion.
Give you a motion.
Motion, Ms. Roberts.
Second.
Second, Mr. Etcher. Dave?
I would just note, uh, this is a requirement, uh, we had the same sort of street, streetlight resolution that we approved for Westview Platt for a few months back, um, as Chris is wrapping up his development out at Anthem, Platts one and two, um, there are projected thirty-three lights that'll be put in along, um, Snyder Drive, uh, Anthem and, uh, South Main, and, uh, as part of the development, Chris puts the lights in, but once they are put in and projects opened up, we accept the roads and all that, then we take on the cost for, uh, paying for the lighting of those lights, and this is a typical resolution that Alliance has us, uh, approve for our new developments.
Does this include the roundabout lighting?
This does not include the roundabout, I think, I think that's still being, that's still being discussed.
There is four for the roundabout and four for the turn lane, so it'll be eight more lights, like, is it eight total?
I don't remember.
I know it's four for the roundabout, I'm pretty sure it's also four for the Snyder for like, so eight more.
So since that's a state highway, not a city, are we paying that, or?
Well, that's a question that our Public Works has been asking to find out, but more than likely, I think Jeff has indicated that, uh, we've got a twenty A D that we do certain amount of maintenance that we get with the coming through, so Jeff, why don't you come up and, come up, please?
Okay, thanks, point of order, I didn't mean to get us off track for the Anthem one, I just had the. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, any additional discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Rigler?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Good, moving along, uh, next item is item six point three, it's ordinance number five five five, it's a ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Huxley by rezoning property owned by Madderd Homes for the Aging located at nine oh eight US Highway sixty-nine, one thousand one North Park Boulevard, one thousand three, one thousand five, and one thousand seven North Park Boulevard from C two, commercial to R three multifamily residential, this would be the first reading, need a motion on this.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Etcher.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Rigler, I will remind, uh, council members that, uh, the city did receive a petition on this matter, uh, there's a provision in our code which then requires a supermarch. Uh, there's a provision in our code which then requires a super majority of the council to vote in favor of this resolution. So it will take four council members to vote in favor, at least four, to vote in favor of this. Um, and this is both properties. It's the former Madrid Home structure as well as the, the undeveloped land of the north. It's all being rezoned under one item here, so. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll ask for some discussion from council. Uh, we have received, uh, obviously some written communications from citizens. Uh, but at the public hearing, and again, this evening, we, we received quite a few comments. Those are one-way conversations at that point, uh, but I would certainly encourage council members, uh, to answer those questions or address those questions that have, that have been asked of you. So, um, I'll open it up for council discussion at this time.
I'll go first. So I just, I want you to know that we do take these roles seriously. Um, I am in favor of this rezoning. This is not the site plan. We are not at that stage, but I feel like every single concern that has been brought up has been addressed. So the traffic. Oh, sorry, I thought. The traffic, um, the R-two to R-three, I would like to put limitations on there so we are not so dense in that area. And I do believe with, um, what Abby has brought to us, it would actually qualify for the R-two. So I know people have talked about the R-two, R-three. I want this town to look nice. I want people, um, when they come into town to, to make it look nice. We visited properties in other towns. We've had letters of support from those individuals that would have her back and would have her do the same development over. Um, the school was taken into consideration. We reached out to them. They knew this was going in ahead of time, so this is not a blind side to this, to the school. And I tried to take notes, so give me a second here. Hadn't thought about the bus stops. I don't know if there's going to be two bus stops there or not. As far as Chris's, um, support, we did throw our support for both. You were right. I don't want you to think we didn't. We did. We even had a, we had people make phone calls in support of that. So I have always supported your developments, Chris. I've been on here fourteen years. People will say I support developers way too much. Um, but I always have. I think we have to be good partners. It's the only way this city can grow. We don't have the kind of money to put in the infrastructure that this city needs without development support. I also think we have made better partners with our developers in the recent years than we used to. We don't run TIF out as long as we used to. This is not a TIF property. There's no money for, this is a private sale. I'm going on my rant here. McDonald's was a private sale. Um, traffic.
I would just remind you that as part of the process to submit both applications, as part of that, whoever projects that are awarded, the city had to agree up to a thousand-dollar abatement or a rebate for each unit. And that's the only thing that has been, that was pledged for either project that we submitted.
Not making me a liar. Um, sorry, I'm still looking through my notes. I think that's it. Uh, traffic study. Oh, that land has set vacant. I know you've heard this story. I know you've heard this song and dance. Nobody is putting any houses over there. They're not, they're, it is not cost-effective for developers, or they would have done it by now. As far as the traffic, DOT is not going to allow us to go out. That's why we had to end the road over, um, when you're coming off Centennial. DOT made us do that. DOT made Chris put in that roundabout out there. Don't hate us on the roundabouts. We don't have control over that. Um, and there'll be no more exits on sixty-nine, so there's no way commercial could go in there. So I feel like everybody just wants that to sit vacant. And that's not, it's not something that I am in favor of. Um, and that's all I can talk about on this one. So thanks. Just being very transparent. Not afraid to talk to anybody about this afterwards.
So I did go down to Grinnell or over to Grinnell, um, with the city manager back in, I believe it was April, uh, to look at the properties they have in Grinnell. Um, the properties were going on five years old. Um, they were very well-kept up. They were almost like new. I, my assumption. Um, well-lit, parking lots were good. Um, Jeff, maybe you can speak for this. I mean, I'm not a construction guy, um, but you've looked at it, um, and compare it to what we have that you have looked at in Huxley already. I mean, uh, because it looked like it was good construction to me.
Yeah, I mean, I, we had a brief meeting, I don't know, I mean, but I had been the developer, builder, and and based on the plans I saw. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, tell them.
Hey, I'm Jeff Beg. We're State Building. We're the building officials for the city of Huxley. So we met with the architect, developer, and builder about a month ago concerning this project. They showed me their thirty-thousand-foot plans. So I did not see detailed construction plans on this project, but basically some elevations and some floor layouts. And I they, I can assure you they will be co-compliant construction. And, and based on what it looks like, it will be some kind of cement board type product that's easily maintained and strong. To be co-compliant.
Okay. Thanks. So the other issues that I had looked at also, um, both Dave and myself talked to the school superintendent just the other day, because one of the issues were that the school classes are already almost at capacity or over capacity now, uh, and the superintendent assured us that that is not the case. And they want more uh, kids in their growth. Um, so I thought that was interesting also. Um, Chris's, your comments last week, um, tell you the truth, I was kind of disappointed with that. Um, because we have given you quite a bit in TIF. Uh, we have supported your, uh, development. Um, I've, ever since I've got on the council, I've been open that I'm not for, uh, residential TIF. Um, and we are not giving TIF on this as far as I know. Um, so I was very disappointed in your comments. Uh, I, I do agree with you. It's competition. Um, and that's, you know, everybody needs competition. But, um, so other, other than that, I mean, I, I'm for it. Uh, I know I've got friends uh, that live in that area that are opposed to it. Um, hopefully we still be friends, but, uh, uh, I think this is a, a good thing for the community. Um, the lot, the, the, the property is set vacant and will stay vacant. Uh, we had, uh, another local businessperson, developer, look at that property. We were going to be changing it to R-three, and we were also looking at giving that person TIF money. And that person evidently, for some reason, found out that it didn't work for that person. So backed out. So, and I, I tell you the truth, I think this was a better development than that one, so that's all I have.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully we don't get beat back there. Um, Tracy and Rory touched on a few of the things, but, um, so that you guys know, we do come up with notes. We'll fit stuff down. Um, it's not lost on us. And like Rory said, I have a couple of friends who live on North Park, so I definitely made phone calls to them to get their take. Um, one of them's definitely opposed. Um, one of them recognizes that something is going to go in there. Um, and they at least thought that this design looked appealing, um, from a density perspective. Um, they recognize it won't stay a vacant lot for forever. Um, I agree that I don't think it's commercially viable now that there's not going to be access to sixty-nine. Um, DOT has made that clear. Uh, traffic concerns, I heard those numbers. Um, I, I don't know what to make sense of the numbers other than, uh, like she said, I believe Greg agreed to. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I we've heard traffic numbers in, uh, development near where I live, and I second-guessed them, and they've started developing it, and it, yeah, it hasn't been what we expected. It's not finished yet, so I have to, to some degree, trust calculations from the state or recommendations from the state that those people know how to do their jobs. Um, let's see, the other cons, drainage questions. Again, I live in a development where there were drainage issue questions. Um, we have a city engineer. He goes through the plans. He's been very open to questions, concerns that we've had when I've come to him, so I trust that before we sign off on any site plan, those are going to be addressed. I know that you just had an initial proposal. Uh, that's hard. Before I was on council, I didn't, I didn't know the steps that it took, so there were times I, I saw things as a done deal when there were still stages that they had to go through for approval. Um, on my pros-con list, some of the pros were taking something that hasn't generated any taxes for the city, and we're going to generate some tax revenue. Um, people touched on the vacancy rate. Chris, I, I appreciate what you said. Um, I guess, not just for you for this. Anytime someone asks me about Huxley, I'm recruiting people to Huxley. I'm all for Anthem. Um, anytime someone's critical about the roundabout, I clarify to them. I promise you, this was not Chris's choice to throw a roundabout in and, and cause issues for you. Um, so, yeah, I am to bat for Huxley, and I recognize the risk that you're taking. Um, I'm super grateful for everything that you're doing down at Anthem. Um, and I think that should be recognized. If I were in your shoes, I would be passionate, and I was elbow-deep in a combine last week, but where I would have been here, I had to re-listen to it. Um, anyone who said that, I guess, I don't know. I, I disagree with that. It'd be hard for me not to be passionate and a little, uh, yeah, aggravated with how things went, but um, let's see, yeah. One of the previous homeowners who was here touched on, they live adjacent to uh, Madrid Homes, and they've seen some of the vandalism. We've seen that recorded. Um, it's, yeah, again, it's not going to be unused forever. On home values, because I have a friend in North Park, we ran some numbers, and this is from Beacon, so, um, the properties immediately adjacent in Perry Wood, which is the Perry Development, went up in assessed values from twenty-one to twenty-five. So these were put in in twenty-one. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what the dates on Beacon said. They went up thirty-nine percent. The ones in Grinnell went up thirty-three percent in assessed values. Uh, I did a handful. So I did five of the houses and two of the townhomes that were nearby. I figured it's a little more sensitive to throw out people's names or exact addresses, but look on Beacon, if you guys want to see the average. Uh, on North Park, we averaged twenty-two-point-seven percent in increased assessed value over that time. It's not apples to apples. They're two different cities. I can't tell you what the average in Grinnell versus Perry versus Huxley is. You can try and Google it. It's not an exact science. Um, but I looked at the homes that are adjacent to this potential development, and I looked at the homes that were adjacent to the ones that went in in Grinnell and Perry. It didn't seem to have a negative impact. Um, they outperformed or increased assessed value. Um, whether that's because they're in Perry and Grinnell versus Huxley, that I can't speak to. Um, but they certainly didn't underperform the adjacent properties in Huxley, so. Um, yeah, for that reason, I am supportive of the rezoning. I agree with Tracy. I think, uh, it sounds like we're open to putting language in once we get to the site plan stage, as far as confirming that the density stays what the density that's been discussed is. So that would make Madrid Home R-three, and then, um, I'll have Dave clarify if R-two is the exact density of the Ego Homes over being.
I, I, I think what we've what's, what's talked about is you would, it would be R-three zoning, but you would look at, so within the code of ordinances, uh, it doesn't give you a specific density of number of units in R-one, two, or three, but when you look at our comp plan, you've got your low density, which typically is your R-one. You've got your medium density, which is R-two, and you've got your higher density, uh, which they, they don't say R-one, two, or three in your comp plan, but they give those densities, and I think, uh, what, what I heard Abby say is that she's willing to, um, look at the, that medium density to kind of fit that neighborhood. So you would look at that versus the higher density that could be allowed through the comp plan. Uh, like I said, the code doesn't give you specifics. R-one gives you some bulk requirements. R-two gives you bulk requirements. R-three gives you bulk requirements, which are your setbacks, heights, those sorts of things, so.
Sure. Yeah, so, yeah, we can finesse that language and confirm that when a site plan actually comes to us. Right now, we're just talking about the rezoning of it. Um, and then, yeah, the final thing Rory touched on, which was probably in my pros-con list, the, you know, the tipping point is we have had other developers come to us wanting to propose this and rezone it with higher density, asking for TIF. Um, they couldn't make it work, obviously. Uh, we have a proposal in front of us now that is a medium density. Um, to me, I would agree. I think it's a favorable proposal to the one that we saw before. Um, considering the fact that there has been so much opposition to residential TIF in Huxley, myself included. Um, so for those reasons, I'm going to be supporting this.
You want to go, or you?
No, just follow the line on down.
Uh, well, I live the closest to this. I'm just outside of that zone of impact, so I live a block away from, from this proposed rezoning and um, I was also the first house in that Northwood, uh, Northview Heights, um, development. So I've watched it all develop for the last twenty-some years. I've watched all of y'all creeping closer and closer to me, and, and I love it. Um, I've developed some great friends and, and great neighbors out of, um, folks that have moved closer to us, so, um, I've really appreciated and watched it go from two hundred vacant lots to, with a, with a park in the middle to, to a neighborhood and, and a giant part of this community. And, um, um, part of that was supporting local developers. One of the things that I heard in the public meeting and, and everyone else was, uh, the talk about outsiders coming in. And I think about all the, um, local developers that we've supported. This council has supported for years and years and years, right? We, we wouldn't have the two hundred lots in Northview. We wouldn't have the Iron Bridge Development. We wouldn't have Westview. We wouldn't have the Flights and, and others, the Anthem. We've, we've supported our local developers, the Plaza and everything else. And I think we can't keep Huxley a secret any longer. Right? Uh, and outsiders, uh, it sounds like D.R. Horton's heard about us. Um, we've heard, you know, um, having this unique location closer to right between Ankeny and Ames is, we're not a secret anymore. We, when I moved to town, it was twenty-five-hundred, twenty-eight-hundred people, and now we're pushing five thousand. We, we're continuing to grow and develop. Um, we're looking at Project Line. I can say that, you know, the safe company is, uh, making sure all those houses are built to compliance. Um, built to, you know, and, and Forrest and his, his crew and the engineering team behind him are making sure all the roads and water structure and water treatment plants and everything else are built to s- standard specifications and, and the site plans are developed and designed to, uh, level that, that matches our comp plan. Our planning and zoning compares that stuff to the comp plan and has offered a, um, positive, uh, favor for this plan. Um, I can see this. Uh, I like the fact that we could consider the, the R-two density on, on the lots to the north on this. I really like that as a better. I agree that I think the, looking at the buildings going east-west doesn't look like just giant massive buildings, right? So I think, um, both from sixty-nine and um, North Park, it's going to look better. There's a lot of trees and landscaping, and there is some green spaces there. Um, we hear about the traffic. Traffic engineering calculations are based on units and house numbers and cars and standard science that, that they are what they are. I, I didn't run the numbers on this, um, specific development, but I know the the processes and the formulas that they use are accurate and are the current standard um, that they did this, so I trust the calculations are, are true. Um, there's probably a registered professional engineer that are standing behind those numbers, um, also. And their livelihood depends on that, so, um, it's nice to hear that the school anticipates additional growth and, and can handle that capacity um, that, that could go there, so I'm really excited about that. I'm also excited, uh, um, about this project just to fill that in, so I, I will support it because I think they could be good community members, just like all of my new neighbors that have moved in in the last twenty-some years around here. I do agree with the concern that seems like a lot of apartments in, in Huxley, uh, or that, so the sheer volume of that, that's, that's a lot. Um, and And so hopefully everyone's done their math and we can fill those because I'd like to see them filled. Like to see Huxley continue to grow and thrive. So I really want to see those. I really like what Chris is doing on the south side of town with Anthem one twenty. That's why I fully support that. And, and everything that's going in there. So I'm, I'm praying that all of this succeeds and, and comes together. So with those things in there, the traffic issues that could be at North Park and Centennial. All of those can be addressed through site plans and, and planning. I've already talked to some different traffic engineers and different solutions. That could be easily solved to help with traffic flow through that area. So there, there's things that can be done rather than just looking at the way it sits today. And I care about that too, because I have to leave my cul-de-sac. And I want to be able to get out, so that's definitely something I care a lot about, so. Those are the reasons why I would support it and we did hear you all. I took seven pages of notes last week. I took a couple pages of notes this week. I've addressed them. I've prepared thoughts. I've went and researched some other stuff. We did hear you and thank you for coming out. It's great to see good attendance at these city council meetings. I'm glad to see that we're in a community that cares.
Well, I'll finish up here. I would echo a lot of the thoughts and, and stuff that's there. I just want to reiterate, my job tonight is not to worry about the site plan. And I know that we've heard a lot of concerns about water, traffic. Believe me, I had a development go in behind my house. I was right there in line with you guys with concerns, issues and that. And those will be addressed at the appropriate time when a site plan does come in front of the council. So I don't want anybody to leave tonight and think that we didn't listen to you or hear you. I understand them concerns and, and I would be right there with you. With some of them concerns also. I do want to stress though what my job really is up here. My job is to guarantee that we have equal opportunity for everybody. So what I mean by that is if you guys come to the city of Huxley and you want to do something and you fit the bill of goods, you fit the rules that are set forward. You should have the opportunity to proceed. What my job is not is to guarantee equal outcome. So if a pride, I hope to gosh that everybody comes to city council succeeds. Cause that's, that's what's best for Huxley if everybody succeeds. But I'm not here to guarantee one over the other or who succeeds and who doesn't succeed. That's a business decision, not a city decision. With this, I, I just echoed the sentiments. This has sat empty for a long time. We have had people come and look at it. I think from the city perspective, filling that in, getting it back on the tax rolls. Just only makes sense. And so for that, I would be in favor of doing what we need to do. I do understand the concerns with the R three, with density, that kind of aspect. Fully understand that and it sounds like potentially we can get that worked out in a later stage. So with that, I would join the fellow council people in, in favor of. Moving this from a C two to an R three.
Thank you for your comments. Aaron, before us tonight, of course, is just a rezoning from C two to R three. Are we able to put a condition of density on this rezoning?
On the rezoning, it would need to have approval of the developer in order to do that. And so if that's the wish of the council, I would ask that you. Amend the ordinance that's in front of you to add that as a condition. Subject to agreement that's mutually agreeable between the city and the developer.
I, I asked that question because I heard it from a couple of council members, so. The, the motion was by Mr. Etcher and the second was by Ms. Roberts, so I guess I'll start with you folks. Do you have any desire to modify your motion to include a density restriction?
You have to do it because he made the motion, I have to.
So I'll amend the emotion to go the R three for the actual. So we don't, we're not including the.
There'll be R three zoning. But we want to. Lots to the north.
Okay, I amend the. Proposal for medium density to the lots to the north.
Second.
And I'll look to the developer because this does take your. You brought a theme console, your request, so I'll let you, are you in agreement with that or do you have concern?
Okay, so we have an amended motion and second, is there any additional questions? Or concerns from council? Hearing none, this will take four votes to pass, or yes votes. Roll call please.
Murphy.
Yes.
Roberts, yes. Rigler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
For those in the public, this was the first reading. This motion will, this resolution will take three readings. The second reading will occur. At the December ninth meeting. So you're certainly welcome to contact your city council members between now and then. You're also welcome to show up on December ninth. You'll have an opportunity to speak as well at that meeting, so I would encourage you to stay involved. If the second and third reading do pass, there will then be a site plan approval process and. I know Mr. Murphy spoke to that, as did some others. That process kind of starts over again. It goes back to, starts with staff, then it goes to planning and zoning and then it comes to council, so. Certainly your concerns have been heard, as, as has been stated. And those will, will look to incorporate as many of those as we can in that site plan review process, should this be rezoned. With that, we move along to department reports. Any staff members with oral reports this evening? There's written reports, of course. Forrest?
The only thing I would say is, is part of the site plan review, we do get to that point for the Madred Homes property. We will require a stormwater management plan and we will require a traffic impact study. So those will be required as part of the, the review of that site plan. Design? Oh, okay. As part of the review of the site plan, when we get to that point, we will require a traffic impact study. Be performed and a stormwater management plan be presented as well as part of the site plan review.
Yep, nope, nothing for me this evening.
It's budget time. We, we started working on the fiscal year twenty-seven budget. Have most of the department heads proposed budgets and working on those.
Just glad to be back at work. Can be happy to answer any questions. I apologize for not getting a memo in, but. A couple of short days last week to try to get everything put together. I just didn't have time to get that done, but. I did attend the conference in Tampa for ICMA. I thank you for that. There were a lot of great sessions. There's some things that. I have access to all of those meetings and the videos until March, that there's a couple that I want to go back and look at. Some things that may be beneficial to us as a community as we move forward into the next year. I know there was some, there, there was a request regarding the solid waste issue. I did reach out to, excuse me, why I adjust my leg? It's tired of keeping it up. I reached out to Metro Solid Waste, visited with their, their community relations persons today. And she informed, we talked a little bit about and I had said, you know, that we were part of the, I said, I'm sure you're aware of what's going on with the city of Ames. They're closing the resource recovery. My city council has asked that we look at, are there any other options that, that may be available to our residents? She told me that as it relates to. Getting rid of regular trash, we do not have an option to go to them. The D N R has areas and it typically is by county. Where you are required to take your normal trash. If we were to look at wanting to offer. Curbside recycling, that's something that's not mandated as part of the trash initiative through D N R. So we could do something on that. I asked her, you know, I said, we've looked, we've talked about hazardous waste. We talked about. Yard waste, so she's going to put some other information together, but I think the short answer for the trash is, I think we are going to be required to. Sign a new twenty eighty with City of Ames as, as, as they move forward to build their transfer station. And then have that solid waste hauled over to Carroll County here in the next few years, so.
Very sad.
Yeah, she said the, you know, they have metro, they have two landfills, one for Polk Counties and Mitchellville. And they've got one in Dallas County and. Adele is the only city in Dallas County that doesn't haul to that particular site. I think they're part of the Des Moines Metro that goes to Mitchellville, so.
I just want to first of all, say thank you for everybody that's come out these last couple of weeks, because. I wish you'd come out every meeting. It makes it a little bit more exciting for us up here. But I do appreciate that. The other thing I'd say to everybody is. Thanksgiving's coming up Thursday, so everybody take a few days off. Get fat, enjoy yourself, relax, spend time with family. That's really what it's all about is community and family and just don't lose sight of that.
That was a tough one to follow, but. Yeah, he did. I like it. All right, so. I, well, I was gonna go there. That's on my list. Chris, I'm glad the roundabout's open and those signals are gone. That's, that's awesome. I drive that almost every single day, so. That's nice. So, and tomorrow, the I thirty-five two-ten interchange opens. I drove it this morning and it is awesome. So they had just a few more signs to put up, so pretty excited about that. That'll help all of us commuters that are going out to the interstate that way, so. Rams also, yeah, yeah, so that'll be a definite positive for our community. You can get there and, and back. So excited about that. Jeff, a couple of weeks ago, I just wanted to follow up. There was a. Citizen that talked about a culvert over here, drainage culvert across from the high school practice fields and stuff. Did that ever get looked up or looked at or followed up on?
Matt was here that night, but it was LePage. Culvert sinking in across from.
Jeff and I've. We, we, we've had conversations over the last couple of years and we'll schedule some time to visit with council about it.
Yeah, okay, just, just making sure we were following up on that on the radar. Outstanding thing, so. I echo what John said. I appreciate everyone coming out and input. It is good to hear from the folks. It's. It's, it's not always, we've heard both sides of the story. We've heard the goods and the supportive and we've heard the ones that said that's a really bad idea. And it's, it's, it's hard to sit up here. We give up a lot of Tuesday nights of our lives to come up here and, and sit and. And try and make the best decisions for our community and, and it's, it's helpful, but makes it really hard. When, when not everybody sees it exactly the same way, but. We, we have tough jobs up here. We give up a, a lot of our lives to, to make this happen. And we do that because we care about this community as well, so. We, we're, we're up here. This is closing on my sixth year of sitting up in the front here. And, and Dave and, and Tracy have been up here much longer and. I appreciate all the time they've given back and their expertise to the, the community. And really seen some great growth in my twenty-some years of, of living here, so. Just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. So I'm supposed to follow Thanksgiving and the opening of the, the two-ten intersection? Jokes aside, I'll, I'll, yeah, we are thankful when people come and provide us feedback. I guess something we should have touched on. We also receive emails, so there's, there's feedback there that doesn't always get addressed. We try and respond to them. One, I guess shameless plug for the community. We do have the Small Business Saturday. I can't remember the date, but. Yeah, this is not a, you know, celebration of us, but the community, but. Make sure, I think it's on the city's Facebook page on the bulletin, but there is a Small Business Saturday. We all love Huxley if we're up here. We, we volunteer a lot of time. We spend a lot of time outside these meetings to make sure we're informed, so. And I believe I speak for all of us when we say that, you know, we love the businesses. Go out to Flight, go out to Fence Line, Chicken Shed. There's a whole bunch of great ones in our community. I didn't mean to leave anybody out. I just don't want to ramble. But take advantage of Small Business Saturday and go and support them.
Yeah, nothing. Just thank you for coming out. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for your comments. That will conclude our regular business for this evening. We do have a work session item this evening. There is only one item. And it's regarding permit fees on fences. Is there anybody from the public wishing to be heard on the work session item this evening, which is permit fees on fences? I was gonna say, Nate does, okay. All right. So moving along, Dave, do you want to give us kind of an, or I'm sorry, Barb?
Actually Barb's gonna take care of this. It's something that came about while I was out recuperating.
Thank you.
We do a lot of things while you're out recuperating, Dave. Just a, a little background, a few years ago at. Mayor Kuhn, then council member Kuhn's suggestion, we started adding a hold harmless agreement to our fence permits. Basically for easements that are across the area where the fence is going. A part of that says that the hold harmless agreement is transferable. Upon transfer of the property. However, we recently found out that unless that document's recorded. We have no legal ground to stand on, so we started talking about recording the documents. And in order to do that, it's going to require an additional fifteen dollars. Per permit, which would raise our permit fee to a hundred and forty dollars to application. We talked about some different options on that and I just, Amy. Who does the fence permits is in Dallas this week, so she asked that I read you some of her notes. So she would prefer that the fee is a standard set fee, no matter if there's an easement in the yard or not. The permit fee is typically submitted with the permit, mostly electronically and is forwarded onto Safe Build for their review. If the fee applies to only those with easements, she would be refunding fifteen dollars to those who do not have an easement. And someone would have to. Check to make sure that there wasn't an easement in order for that to be refunded. So the process could not happen until after the review by Safe Build to confirm if there's an easement or not. So I guess Safe Build would confirm if there's an easement or not. If we do not collect the recording fee upfront, then we're going to have to backtrack around to the applicant. To collect the additional fifteen dollars to record the hold harmless agreement. We, she didn't put that in here, but we talked about. What we would run into if we required that. The person getting the permit would record the permit and that's still going to involve a lot of chasing around or record the permit. That's still going to be a lot of chasing around to make sure that's recorded. So she said two permits, one for properties with easements, a hundred and forty feet and one for, one permit. Without an easement, a hundred and twenty-five dollar fee. The resident may not know if they have an easement and may submit the wrong form. We've had this situation before where a resident states they had no idea there was a drainage easement. So her preference is that the hundred and forty dollar fee is just across the board. If we get into the business of if, if this, then this, she's going to be spending a lot of time tracking down what is needed. An extra payment or refunding money and she and Safe Build have spent countless hours and worked very hard. To perfect the building permit, so every permit scenario needs the same form. So her preference is that. The, we do the same with fences as we strive for efficiency. I don't have an opinion one way or another, because I'm going to be the one that's, the only thing I'm going to be doing is recording the hold harmless agreements. So we just, we just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Do we have any data on volume? Like how many there are for easements, how many there are not?
That, I, I know we do a lot of, a lot of fence permits. We did get from Safe Build Windsor Heights fence permits are a hundred dollars.
Just in Huxley.
Just in Huxley. Um, no, she didn't, I didn't get any data on that. I know that. What's that?
I don't know. I'm not, I don't like to raise the, I don't like that idea, but I get the, the runaround with.
I don't know. I'm not, I don't like to raise the, I don't like that idea, but I get the, the runaround with fifteen back. Right. And, and the other thing that we could do is our cost for Safe Build is a hundred dollars per permit. So that's what we have to pay Safe Build. Um, the twenty-five is to take care of administration. We could take that fifteen out of the twenty-five. If, if the council's adamant about not raising fees.
I, certainly I'm a proponent of keeping fees as low as we can. Um, I understand there is cost to staff for, for preparing these things. I, I guess my, uh, and I fully respect Amy's position on this and she deals with these day in, day out directly and, and I don't. So I, I respect her position. I, I think you only want them paying, if they pay upfront, you only want them paying the flat. Was it a hundred and twenty-five, whatever that was, one twenty-five, the flat one. Well, I guess what I would propose is the city of Huxley will be proposing, I'm sorry, will be preparing the hold harmless agreement. The property owners must then come in and sign that hold harmless agreement. It gets notarized by staff. At that point, I would ask them for their fifteen dollar payment. They're right in front of us anyway, at that moment in time. Um, I, I guess that's how I would propose to, to address this.
Right. And she said, I'm trying to remember how she said that. So the, okay, so the permit fee has to be paid for before we can give it to Safe Build, which who would confirm if there is an easement or not. So we would have to change the form to say that, well, Safe Build's not going to accept it if it's not signed.
Isn't Safe Build going to review the permit, then give it back to the city and say, hey, this one is good from Safe Building standpoint, but also you need to collect a hold harmless?
And then I'll have to check with her when she gets back. I don't think it typically worked that way in the past, at least with permits I've pulled. You just wait until you're done. You get the permit, they come and look at the work and then approve. But I like your idea. If you can come in, if you can just use the same form, add something to the bottom and collect from those that are affected. I would prefer that.
Could we look at a compromise and just raise it five bucks and to help cover the costs across the board? I mean, I don't know how many permits we're talking about, and I'm not a big fan of the government taking money from people either. Um, but I also know sitting here on council that we have wasted, I won't say wasted, but we have invested a lot of time here recently over a situation that if it had been recorded and recorded properly with an easement, we wouldn't have had them discussions. And, and I'm all in favor of getting things recorded so we don't have a he said, she said situation down the road. And if that requires having to compromise on fees, I guess I'm willing to compromise if that's what it takes to, to rectify the problems.
Okay, good conversation, Mr. Mulder. Okay, good. In you know, yeah.
I like your outside of the box thinking. That's good.
Just trying to find a solution.
Right. And, and I totally agree. They, they have to be recorded. There's no, no way around that. We do need to have them recorded.
Oh, absolutely. Um, I doubt we're seeing too many of our fence permits between now and.
No, it's right.
That's the nice part is we do have just a little bit of time to deal with this. Um, maybe if you could circle back with Amy, maybe I'll reach out to Amy as well. Maybe better understand, uh, the complications with it. And then, uh, ultimately we'll bring this back, uh, as a resolution for council.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I would ask for motion to adjourn.
Give him one.
Motion by Roberts.
Second.
Second by Etcher. All those in favor, please just turn to the eye.
I.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. We'll see you on December ninth.
Yes.